All right.
Turn my microphone on, here we go. All right. So I am going to call all three meetings to order now. And I am going to ask the city clerk, do you want to do a roll call please?
Yes, Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Here.
Councilmember Trembley.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Tennyson will be a few minutes late. And Mayor Kildee.
I'm here.
All right. We're going to do closed sessions first today. And it's items A, B, and C. And I'm going to ask councillor, do you need to make a notice about why we're going into closed session?
Yes, if I could just indicate, we have one anticipated litigation matter pursuant to government code section 54956.9. We have two existing litigation matters, the Roy Allen Slurry Seal Matter and the VCCAMC versus the City in Costco matter. And then the last matter is threat to public services or facilities pursuant to government code section 54957. And if there's any reportable action, I'll make that report.
Okay, so with that, we are going to be in recess now for the closed action items that were just verbalized here. And we will be back around 5 o'clock. So with that, we're in closed session.
Actually, part of the portion is going to be here in the chambers.
Right, yeah. Going to be in our chamber for the photo, right? For the, am I right?
On our item for public facilities, this is a matter that needs to be addressed within the chambers. So any members of the public that are not, you know, we only have employees here and the council. So that's what we need to have here. So it looks that that's what we have. So we can proceed with that closed session.
Okay, so with that, we're in recess. Thank you.
We're now live.
Okay, I'm going to reconvene the city council meeting and I am, actually, I'm going to open up the city council in the Camrio sanitary district and I'll ask the city clerk to do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Here.
Councilmember Trembley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Here.
Mayor Kildy?
Here. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Trembley, would you be so kind to lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Would you follow me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, so now the approval of the agenda is submitted. Are there any changes that we need to be aware of with that? Hearing none. We are going to go down to the presentation and it's Pride Month and I'm going to ask representatives if they come over to my right here, up here in the way, if you would. Okay, we have the youngest right there and I look at, we forget how soft their skin is, it's just unbelievable to me. Okay, the city, our city is dedicated to inclusivity and a safe environment for all and we recognize the importance of equality and respect for every resident here. So, tonight we're joined by residents, representatives of Diversity Collective, a nonprofit dedicated to serving the LGBTQ plus community throughout Ventura County and Love Always Wins in the Camrio Foundation, which hosted the 4th Annual Camrio Pride Festival this past Saturday and that was great, I'm sorry, I was not able to attend that. We are welcoming you and we presented and will present to you the proclamation here declaring June as Pride Month in the city of Camrio. So with that, maybe you could introduce yourselves and if anybody would like to make a comment, this is an appropriate time to do it.
Thank you Mayor Kildy. Thank you each one of you, council members, Councilmember Santangelo, who's been with us since the very beginning, Councilmember Trembley, Councilmember Tennyson, Councilmember Martinez Bravo, thank you very much, and of course Mayor Kildy. My name is Michelle Burns, I am the co-founder of Camrio Pride and the director of the Law Wick Foundation. Law Wick stands for Love Always Wins in Camrio and that's our mantra, it's our goal and on Saturday we were able to achieve that again, but I'm going to let my co-founder speak to you about that.
Could you hold this for me, please?
This or this?
That's the one I wanted to hold.
Mayor Kildy and city council members, my name is Leanderhart Thomas and I'm the co-founder of Camrio Pride and the president of the Law Wick Foundation. This is Michelle Burns, also the co-founder of Camrio Pride and the director of the Law Wick Foundation. Together, we thank you for declaring June 2025 Pride Month in Camrio. Thank you for standing strong when you get pushed back from others. Camrio is becoming more and more inclusive every year. Mayor Kildy, I appreciate you recognizing inclusivity Camrio is gaining all the time. Doing what is right is not always easy, but it's always worth it. That's why we're here with you today. Camrio Pride has proven itself to be an asset in our wonderful city. This is apparent in many ways. Last year we had 650 visitors, this year it was over 1,200. We have increased attendance, increased offerings, and fostered a safe place for all, just to list a few. Camrio Pride has been under Diversity Collective's umbrella for the last several years. Due to Diversity Collective's unwavering support and the support of our community, we have been able to form our own 501(c)(3), the Law Wick Foundation Love Always Wins in Camrio. Mayor Kildy, your current support, former mayoral support, and future support from Mayor Tennyson reinforces Camrio residents' positive change is good. Camrio Pride celebrated its 4th year last Saturday. We are proud to say our event has always been peaceful, our security, though strong, has been ornamental. And I apologize for not finding you guys, the chairman, Mayor Kildy, I know, I know, I didn't find you, but I will seek you out next year because we will be back. Michelle and I want to thank you again for your past continued and future support by declaring June 2025 Pride Month and the years going forward, you are making Camrio a safer and more inclusive city, a city Michelle and I are proud to own homes with, homes in, along with you and many others. I appreciate all of you in this forum to share something I am passionate about. Have a blessed evening.
Oh, sorry. It's okay. Thank you Mayor Kildy and city council members for this proclamation and I wanted to say, my name is Raina Nichols and I am a member of the Transverse, which is a global support network for transgender folks and also a media platform and we uplift transgender voices through our participation in community events like Camrio Pride, our peer group meeting at Diversity Collective, and our online shows that are on YouTube and Twitch. And I just wanted to say that this proclamation means a lot to me personally because this is a time when it would be easy to not issue it because of the political climate, so it's especially meaningful now. So I want to thank you for that as a transgender woman. This is a very scary time and I appreciate the support and that Camrio is a place that values all of its citizens and so, and in addition to, just as, we are deeply partnered with Diversity Collective, so I'm accepting it on behalf of them, but they are, they are a wonderful group and they are doing a lot of good in Ventura County, so thank you.
All right, Michelle, any, anybody else see, okay. Councilmembers, any comments? Martita, would you like to?
Sure, I can begin. First of all, many congratulations on your event and on becoming a fully established 501(c)(3). I know that was part of your goals and I'm so very proud of the work that you are doing. I strongly believe that every single human being needs to be treated with dignity and respect and I believe that as an individual, as a mother, as someone from the Catholic faith, and as a council member as well. And I believe that it is important to provide safe spaces for our community regardless of who you are, who you love, and I think that this is the right pathway for the city of Camrio. Because of my mental health background, I also know how important it is to do this work because it literally saves people's lives. And I'm going to read just a couple of key findings from the Trevor Project. This is an annual study that happens, and this is the 2024 National Survey on Mental Health on the LGBTQ plus and the young people from ages 13 to 24 years old in the United Key findings are that 39% of the LGBTQ plus young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including 46% of transgender and non-binary young people. LGBTQ plus youth of color reported even higher rates than white peers. More than 1 in 10%, about 12% of the LGBTQ plus young people attempted suicide in the last year. 50% of LGBTQ plus young people who wanted mental health care in the past year were not able to get it. More than half, 54% of transgender and non-binary young people found their school to be gender-affirming and those who did reported lower rates of attempting suicide. 90% of LGBTQ plus young people said that their well-being was negatively impacted due to recent politics, that is 90%. 45% of transgender and non-binary young people reported that they or their family have considered moving to a different state because of their LGBTQ plus status related to politics and laws. Nearly half, about 49% of LGBTQ plus young people ages 13 to 17 experienced bullying in the past year and those who did reported significantly higher rates attempting suicide in the past year than those who did not experience bullying. And finally, LGBTQ plus young people who reported living in accepting communities such as the city of Camrio, attempted suicide at less than half the rate of those who reported living in unaccepting communities. So the stats are there, the facts are there. If this is the smallest thing that we can do to help save lives, then we will do it and I am committed to continuing to support our LGBTQ plus community in the city of Camrio.
Thank you. Anyone else, Susan?
I'm so happy to welcome you back here again. I have been here since the beginning and I'm so proud of all that you've done. Congratulations on creating Law Wick. I think that's a huge move, a huge momentous occasion for you because it means you can keep going forward. Congrats on the 4th Pride Celebration, 1,200 people, that's no small feat. I'm sorry I wasn't there. And congrats on creating safe spaces for everyone and for your commitment to continuing to do so. Thank you for being part of our committee, community.
All right. Anyone else?
Just very briefly, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much for being here, I really appreciate it. So, always a pleasure, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you, nice to meet you, thank you. You're awesome, thank you. Thanks for being here, she's so cute.
You too. Have a great day.
Aww.
Thank you. You made my day.
Is there a moment for a public comment about this?
Um, do you want to, let's see, we're going to have public, yeah, well, you know, can you wait just one second, let me, let me open the next item of business, hold tight there, is the general public comments. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards tonight or anything?
I do have one person that signed up for general public comment. Do you want to go with that person first?
Yes. Is that the gentleman? Oh.
No, it's going to actually be Mike Hauser and just let you know that there is three minutes to speak for a public comment time and they'll look at the screens.
Thank you, Mayor Kildy and council members, good evening. Mike Hauser, I'm a resident of Camrio and I come before you tonight representing New West Symphony, Ventura County's own world-class symphony orchestra and as one of the co-chairs of the symphony's summer fundraising dinner and concert, which is called Summer Fest, which is going to be held this year on Sunday, June 29th at 5:00 PM at the beautiful Rancho Day Las Palmas Event Center in Moore Park. We would first like to thank the city and city council members, both past and present, for your continued support of Summer Fest and now in its third season and for the symphony as a whole as we celebrate our 30th anniversary this year, providing world-class concert performances here in Camrio at the Rancho Capanha Performing Arts Center, as well as supporting arts outreach and music education for students countywide. In keeping with our 30th anniversary, our theme for this year's fundraising event is Pearls and our concert this year is called Dancing Through the Decades. We have an all-star lineup of incredibly talented singers and musicians who are going to be performing hits from the last 30 years. That includes everything from The Beatles to Frank Sinatra, Chicago, Ricky Martin, Amy Winehouse's Journey, and much, much more, so there is something for everybody's musical taste. The event includes a cocktail hour with a hosted bar with local artists displaying their artworks, dinner will be a superb buffet in an elegant setting, and we are going to have a live auction prior to the concert for all attendees and some of our featured items include Dodgers tickets behind home plate, overseas trips, vacation homestays, special dining and wine events, and much more, with all the proceeds going to support programming and our educational outreach efforts. We will also be paying tribute to special honorees that have supported New West Symphony for the first 30 years and a special presentation to first responders to the devastating mountain fire. And because it's also right before 4th of July, we will be having a patriotic musical tribute as well. This is the symphony's most important fundraiser event annually and the tickets for the dinner and concert, or just the concert by itself, are extremely limited and go quickly and a portion of your dinner ticket is tax deductible. So if anybody would like more information about Summer Fest 2025 or to purchase tickets, that information can be found on the New West Symphony website and that's newwestsymphony.org backslash summerfest. There you'll find complete information about the event, as well as information if you would care to be an event sponsor or donor, which is always greatly appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here and it's really a great organization. I know most, if not all of us have attended and if we can be there, it's really worth going to, it's wonderful, I appreciate you.
Invite should have been distributed to you already.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, sir, would you, let's see, we have another?
Yeah, Sean Baker?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and council folks. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wanted to come in support of the proclamation of Pride Month. I've been a Camarillo resident for over 20 years, and as a licensed marriage and family therapist, and my wife and I co-own New Beginning Center, which is a mental health center here in town. So we've been Camarillo business owners for over 30 years. And just can't thank you enough for the support that this council and this city is coming forward in terms of our queer community. I sit with a group of teens every Thursday in a therapy group, and the numbers that you presented are accurate, if not underestimating. And so, mental health is health. Whatever that we can do to support signs of inclusivity. I spoke at Pride this past Saturday and at other events, and just trying to encourage our local business owners to put diversity flags in their store windows, because visual signs signal accepting and welcoming atmosphere. And it's certainly a cheap way to save lives. So, thank you all for your efforts, and please keep keeping on.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else?
Hi. I am here, obviously, in support of the Pride Month proclamation. Thank you. It really means a lot that the city is still holding firm with its Pride Month declarations and stuff, because, like, again, so many other cities, including in California, aren't. And it's especially impressive for Camarillo, because, like, it's still probably one of the most, like, the more conservative cities in Ventura County. I read somewhere that, like, after Simi, it was the city where most of the population in Ventura County voted for Trump. Granted, Simi was the only place where he won, but Camarillo was second place. But, so, it's all the better that, you know, the Pride Month thing is able to continue. And, yeah, I wouldn't have been able to, like, even really dream of this, you know, when I was a kid, you know? I've lived in Camarillo my whole life. I am 28 years old. Sorry, I'm scattered. I wasn't, I wasn't planning on speaking today. You notice that there is a little he/him pronoun button on my shirt. That is because I only realized in the last month that I'm probably a trans man. Obviously, I'm pre-everything, even pre-voice training. But, the wild thing is, like, I was thinking that I might be, like, years ago, but I just didn't feel, I don't know, I didn't feel, like, really welcome to really experiment. And the wild thing is, I didn't even start suspecting I wasn't a cis woman until my mid-20s, after I completed college. For additional context, and yes, I do know there's less than 40 seconds left, I graduated from Newbury Park High School in 2015, and it's a really, it's, and that was, like, right before, that was when, like, trans kids were rare, or at least not as many were open as were now. But it is really, it's just really sad that, like, even, you know, had I graduated back then still, or if I was graduating this year, class of 2025, it would have been an absolute poop show had I realized I was trans at that time. So, thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
No.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, so what we're going to do is get down to the council staff and intergovernmental reports and the council comments. Would anybody like to start us off tonight and what they've been doing for the past couple of weeks? David, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll be quick. On May 29, I attended the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting, and on June 4, we had a city council budget workshop. Also on June 4, along with Councilmember Martinez Bravo and George Winter from Economic Development, we toured HRL Laboratories, which is a phenomenal business here in Camarillo that's going to provide high-paying scientific jobs, and they expect to potentially double their employment over the next couple of years, and they're working with the city on expansion of their facility. On June 5, I attended RDP, and I'll let the city clerk know it's no longer RDP 21. Since we've been 25 years into the 21st century, it's been renamed RDP. And I would like to remind everybody that this Saturday, June 14 at 10:00 a.m., there will be a memorial service for longtime council member and many, many, many times mayor and Energizer Bunny of Camarillo, Mike Morgan, Padre Sarah Catholic Church on Upland Road, 10:00 a.m. this coming Saturday.
Thank you. Who else would like to go? Martita would just?
May 31, I attended the Friends of Field Workers Harvesting Hope event with Councilmember Santangelo, and a certificate of recognition was offered to the organization for its 10 years of service. June 3, I was invited by trustee Dr. Estrada from Oxnard Unified High School District to participate in the high school graduation, and it was such a wonderful event to be up there and to be able to help to distribute some of the certificates to our students who are truly the next, our next leaders and next generations, and it was, they were all very excited. So, thank you, trustee Estrada, for that invitation. June 4, I attended or was a part of the Mobile Home Land Rent Ad Hoc Committee with Councilmember Santangelo. And June 4, I also attended the HLR Laboratories Business Visit, as was mentioned, with Councilmember Tennyson and Mr. George Winkler. June 4, along with my other fellow council members, I attended the Budget Workshop at the Camarillo Library. And then, June 9, I attended the CSUCI Site Authority Board Meeting. And I just wanted to say that I received multiple email, multiple calls and communications from concerned citizens here in the city of Camarillo regarding what was happening in Los Angeles and the ICE raids here as well. And I know that there are some protests happening this weekend, and I just want to urge the community to continue, if you're going to, you know, show your voice, to please do it in a very peaceful manner, which is the right way to do that. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. Who else? Susan, would you like to?
Sure. On May 31, I attended the Friends of Field Workers Harvesting Hope fundraiser and was happy to present Martita with the certificate. On June 4, I attended the Mobile Home Land Rent Ad Hoc Committee meeting, again, with Martita. And on June 4, later that day, the City Council Budget Workshop. And on June 5, the CPA Board of Directors meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay, anything tonight?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. On May 29, I had the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting with Vice Mayor Tennyson. On June 4, City Council Budget Workshop. And on June 6, the meeting of VCTC, and the vice mayor has already covered the celebration of life for former council member and mayor Mike Morgan, which I appreciate it, and that will be this Saturday. That's it.
Okay, thank you. May 3, we had a VRSD special meeting. June 4, we had the Budget Workshop. And also, earlier that day, I had a VRSD board meeting. And June 5, I attended the Metal Arc Service League Luncheon, and they asked me to speak a little bit about three pillars, in my opinion. I'm sure all the rest of us, three pillars of the community. Bill Little, our ex-city manager. And they wanted to talk a little bit about Mike Morgan as well, who we lost, unfortunately. And also, the individual with the, has some motorcycle, Daniel Schoenwald, too. So I had spoke about all three of those, and they were all very well-received, and Godspeed to all three of them. So with that, does anybody else have anything else that they need to add? Okay, so with that, we're actually down to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on the consent calendar at this particular point?
No.
Okay. Any questions from council on any of the consent items here?
I can move consent.
Well, I'll entertain a motion. There's.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo moved all second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Did you get that, city clerk? You can proceed with the roll call then, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildare.
Yes. Okay, so that's going to get us down to item T. It's the first public hearing. It's the Annual Report on Workforce Vacancies, Recruitment, and Retention Efforts for Calendar Year 2024. And I'm going to ask Wendy Levy, Director of Human Research, there she is, sorry, you're down on the South 40 there. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Again, I am Wendy Levy, the city's HR director. Today, I'll be presenting the city's annual report as required under AB 2561. Just to note, this is not a formality. It's a commitment to transparency about how we're managing one of our most critical resources, our workforce. This hearing provides insight into not only how we staff our city, but how we address emerging challenges in attracting and retaining talent. Today's agenda is structured to provide counsel with a logical, comprehensive overview of staffing conditions. From a high-level review of AB 2561, our current job vacancies, our recruitment and retention efforts, and those challenges, and the responses we're implementing, this session is about equipping council and the public with knowledge related to hiring and human capital strategies. You may ask, why are we doing this? AB 2561 was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September 22, 2024. It took effect on January 1, 2025, and added Section 3502.3 to the Myers-Millias-Brown Act. It requires public employers to publicly report and hold hearings on three major points. One, vacancy status, where gaps exist in staffing. Two, recruitment and retention challenges, what we're doing to attract and keep employees. And three, obstacles and policy gaps, whether any rules, processes, or job structures are hindering hiring. The law also calls for identifying changes needed to address those hiring obstacles. The legislation is passed to ensure government agencies are actively evaluating their staffing ecosystems. The new legislation addresses the issue of job vacancies in local government, the impact of vacancies on an agency's ability to deliver public services, and considers employee workload. It's not enough to post jobs and just hope for the best anymore. AB 2561 mandates that we confront process inefficiencies, policy gaps, and structural issues. This is an opportunity to be transparent and allow the public to understand our processes. Additionally, the legislation refers to specific language relating to labor unions. Although we do not have union-represented employees, the law still applies to us as a public agency. The data I'll be sharing is for the year of 2024, calendar year. To set the table, as of December 31, 2024, the city had 170 budgeted full-time equivalent positions. This data shows how these positions are distributed across departments that deliver direct services to the public. Staffing levels in these departments directly impact service delivery and organizational performance. Understanding where our people are placed is the first step in evaluating operational requirements, matching staffing with today's service needs to ensure community expectations are met. The next slide shows overall trends related to our vacancies. We had 44 total vacancies that were created in 2024. Some carried over from 2023, but this is inclusive of those. 39 were filled, which means we still have vacancies as of the end of 2024. The average vacancy rate over the entire year was 6.8%, which is manageable, but does indicate room for improvement. The highest monthly vacancy rate was 10% in October, while the lowest was 3.1% in January, more than a threefold difference. The vacancy rate began rising sharply in July. This coincided with budget and new position approvals. That increase suggests there may have also been challenges due to recruiting capacity. The good news is that by the end of the year, December shows recovery. 10 positions were filled, reducing vacancies to 13, with the vacancy rate to 7.6%, a positive hiring push at year-end. While 6.8% is manageable, the concern lies in distribution and duration of those vacancies. If some departments remain understaffed for months, or if specialized roles are consistently hard to fill, that points to deeper structural issues. These issues can compromise service quality, staff morale, and public satisfaction. We can also break this down deeper, and as we develop data, we will be providing additional information to determine the level of positions, how long they're vacant, and other information. You may ask, why are people leaving? And there are many reasons why people leave. There were three really major themes. We did have a few involuntary separations. We had an 11% resign. We had a total of 20% retire, and then we had approximately 39% of new positions that were added throughout the year. It is important to note with these vacancies that we do conduct exit interviews when people leave the organization to gain deeper insights into the departing employee's experience, to track and share that information. And this helps us to determine whether improvements can or should be made. This slide shows vacancy filled by recruitment type, and there are three different recruitment types. Internal promotions, which you'll see, reflect strong development culture, but they also thin the bench. We need to pay attention to this and ensure we are replenishing that bench with equally qualified candidates, and that internal promotions are balanced with new perspectives from outside. This metric is key to understanding whether we're building a sustainable talent pipeline. As I mentioned before, 39 vacancies were filled in 2024. Of those, 11 were filled internally. Fill times vary significantly by each recruitment strategy, and this highlights where process improvements can be targeted. There are three different types of recruitment. There is alternative recruitment, meaning ongoing eligibility lists, where qualified candidates are placed on the list for future hiring possibilities. These are highly efficient, and this method should be evaluated for broader use when it is feasible. Expansive recruitment, meaning external and external recruitment postings, is the most common, with 34 hires. And then we did hire four with focused recruitments, which means they were open for department consideration only, for internal promotion, excuse me, within the city. Our recruitment process is lengthy, and I've outlined the steps here. It shows a structured, compliance-oriented recruitment pipeline. It balances internal accountability via screening and panel exams with operational flexibility, with alternate lists, internal versus external recruiting, as I spoke of before. The key points of the recruitment process are defining the need, planning, timeliness, outreach, consistent and fair processes, and communication, with job placement, which is the last step in the recruitment pipeline. With job placement, which is the last step in the recruitment pipeline. Sorry, that's my place. The process does not end there. We need excellent onboarding, leading to growth and development over the employment lifecycle. This results in a satisfying employee experience resulting in retention, which we always seek. Some of the challenges for recruitment are outlined in this pie chart. Anecdotally, the challenges listed here are persistent across many government agencies: slow processes, outdated descriptions, remote work, and the perception of government as a whole. But each of these can be addressed through deliberate effort, good community relations, the ability to communicate proactively, and in an engaging way. Providing a feedback loop and creating an accountable and high-performance work culture makes employees want to join and stay at the city, and word gets out. So we have developed a multifaceted response strategy to some of these challenges. As I'm new to the city, these will be ongoing. However, we're talking about rebranding to benefits, to education pipelines. Each lever we pull needs support. These aren't just HR efforts. They're organization-wide shifts in how we think about public employment. The city has and will be taking meaningful steps to attract and retain employees, such as refining job postings to be more engaging, accessible and reflective of our city culture, simplifying application steps, and shortening interview timelines when possible to remain competitive in a fast-moving job market. We will also be improving our digital presence through our website, through LinkedIn, and other social media channels. We are levering a strong affiliation with NeoGov, which is our applicant tracking system, and we are regularly monitoring and maintaining competitive total compensation package. We are also planning a comprehensive review of our employee benefits. We offer alternative work schedules, and we will be heavily focusing on employee engagement and wellness to promote health, wellness, and work-life balance. Mayor and council, I want to offer you the opportunity to weigh in, to ask questions. This report not only informs how we comply with AB 2561, but also how we evolve as a workforce. It helps shape our long-term recruitment posture, workforce health, and ultimately, our ability to serve and develop trust with the community. I will take your questions.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions from anyone? Vice Mayor Tennyson, do you have a question or comment?
Wendy, thank you. Great presentation. Do you know how we fare compared to other municipalities in Ventura County?
That's a great question, Vice Mayor Tennyson. We're actually on par with other organizations. At the 10%, that is an average across all organizations. 7.6% is really good. If we want to get to 5%, that's really, really good. So we have a little ways to go, but ultimately, people who work here want to stay here.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anything at this point? Martita?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. You know, one of the things that I caught my eye was that the city recruited 37 positions during this past calendar year, and that was a combination of the budgeted positions and the internal promotions, and the transfers and employee separations. And I think just that, to me, that's a significant number, but I see it in a more positive way in the sense that it seems like the city is bringing in a lot of new talent. And as we grow and we progress, you know, I just wanted to make that note, that that is an exciting number, at least how I view it on my end. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Tremblay?
Wendy, thanks for the presentation. Can you go back on the slide to show the six major challenges to public service recruitment? It was a great, yeah. Does the, and I think this is an excellent slide, and again, I thought the presentation was excellent. When we're leveraging NeoGov, does NeoGov have responses in terms of its managed recruitment as to all of these issues?
Councilmember Tremblay?
Maybe not directly, but at least inferentially?
So NeoGov offers kind of a connection to a network of other organizations. NeoGov is governments all over, and so it does have a community, and we do share information. It also is a really robust tool to use, so we know where our applicants are coming from. We know, you know, what site they're using. So it does offer an opportunity for us to know where to specifically recruit from, to broadcast to, and to advertise. So in that respect, it's a really good tool. And we can communicate with others in the community, you know, for things like, what are you doing? What's a best practice, and things of that nature.
Okay. I was thinking principally about these challenges, and I'm glad that NeoGov is addressing it in that sense. But I also am thinking of, for example, a university student who is thinking about government service as opposed to going to the private sector and seeing what we might be able to do to educate them. You know, whether it be in, with the municipal government, whether it be in law enforcement, special districts, et cetera, et cetera. You know, what we're doing to try to educate them on this. And I'm not sure that it's our responsibility to do it direct educationally, but I was just trying to think of what we're plugged into and whether or not they're doing that, those education tools.
We do have a great opportunity with the schools that are nearby to, you know, serve on career panels, to get our voice out there, to send our job postings to colleges, technical colleges. We do make those connections. And it is important to make those connections because I don't naturally think that people coming out of high school or coming out of college think of government as a natural segue for their career, you know? And so it's important to start early in those, making those relationships and connecting with people.
Yeah, and I'm thinking specifically in the water and clean water industries in particular. So thank you.
And we also offer internships, if I might add.
That's true, and that's a good, that's a good point. I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, this is an advertised public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards on this particular item?
Nobody has submitted a name.
Anyone want to speak on this item? Okay, so you know, make a dad dash. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll open council deliberation. I think it's a receiving file, if I'm mistaken. We need a motion? Do we need a motion, or can I just? Okay, receiving file. Okay, so that is going to get us down to a discussion item. It's you, the proposed ordinance amending Camrio Municipal Code, Chapter 14-04. It's a water system pollution control. And I'm going to ask Mr. Klotzel, do you want to take this one, please?
Yes, yes, thank you, mayor and council members. There we go. Staff has recommended an amendment to the Camrio Municipal Code regarding the Water System Cross-Connection Control Program. The city's current program is set forth in Section 14.04 of the municipal code with the primary purpose of protecting the city's potable water supply from contamination at points of connection to customer water systems. State codes require that essentially any water connections other than those directly hooked up to indoor plumbing must have a backflow preventer assembly installed between the point of connection to the city system and the customer system, such as pictured here. The backflow preventer basically makes sure water can only flow from the city connection to the customer system, not allowing water to flow backwards, which could introduce contaminants into the city's systems under low-pressure conditions or other unforeseen situations. All customers with backflow preventer assemblies are responsible to have them tested and certified annually to ensure that they are in proper working condition, again, to protect the city's potable water supply. Anyone testing a backflow assembly must be trained and certified, and the city's cross-connection or backflow control program tracks and confirms that the nearly 3,000 backflow preventers connected to our water system are tested and certified each year. So why this item here before you tonight? Last year, the State Water Resources Control Board updated certain requirements of cross-connection control programs through a new policy handbook. The city is required to submit a formal cross-connection control plan to the state by the end of this month, which we are on schedule to complete, and our municipal code, Section 14.04, must be updated to comply with the new policy handbook requirements. The updates reflected in the redlined revisions to Section 14.04 attached to the staff report incorporate the new and revised state requirements, including, among other things, the city must designate a program coordinator, which will be the Public Works Director position or their designee, with our designee being the Assistant Water Superintendent. The program coordinator and anyone testing a backflow preventer assembly must now be ANSI certified, and the city must verify that all testers working within our water service area are properly certified. The city must implement the cross-connection control plan with tracking and reporting the compliance of all the testers and backflow preventers in the city's water system on an annual basis. To accomplish this, staff recommends the attached ordinance amending and restating Chapter 14.04 of Title 14 of the Camrio Municipal Code as stated in the recommendation. And that concludes my report. Open for any questions.
Any questions from anyone tonight? Martita, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have one question. Do we know what current percentage of, like, the backflow testers were not NSI certified?
Right, our current numbers are showing roughly about 80% of testers that have been under the prior certification are now ANSI certified.
Oh, they are now?
Yes, they are now. And so that's looking really good and growing all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Just a quick question, and I may have missed it. Are most of these backflow devices on commercial properties, not residential?
Right, yeah, commercial, industrial, even institutional, the school districts. Basically, a large percentage of them are for irrigation systems. We have them here as a city water customer. The city, we have numerous backflow preventers that our staff, that are ANSI certified, test. So yes, but, you know, residential, very few, unless they have a separate landscape meter and a landscape system. Your typical sprinkler system valve acts as that backflow preventer itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any speaker cards on this issue?
No, there's not.
Okay, so there's no speakers? Is there deliberation on our motions?
So mayor approval? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second, I'll second the vice mayor's motion. I believe he motioned to, for approval of both, both recommendations. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, could you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildie?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, that gets us down to item B. That's amend the fiscal year '24-'25 budget and adopt the fiscal year '25-'26 budget and related resolutions for both the city council and the CSD as well. So I am going to ask Mr. Uribe, would you like to start us off tonight, please?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Members of the city council, members of the sanitary board. This item is the adoption of the proposed '25-'26 budget for the city and Camrio sanitary district. We held a workshop last week to review the proposed budget, and that workshop was about two and a half hours that we went into some detail on the budget items. And tonight's presentation will be a brief recap of that meeting. In addition to the '25-'26 proposed budget, there are also three other annually required items to take action on. The first one is the GASB 54, or Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54, the commitment of fund balance, the GAN appropriations limit, and employee compensation. In preparing the budget, we look at various economic forecasts. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the timeline, sorry. Timeline started in February with the strategic plan and city council goals and objectives, the first session. Then in April, a second session to discuss goals and objectives. And then in May, middle of May, city council held the public hearing to establish water and sewer rates for the upcoming fiscal year. As I mentioned last week, we held the budget workshop. Tonight, we have the consideration for the proposed budget adoption, and then the new fiscal year '25-'26 will start on July 1st. In preparing the budget, as I mentioned, we started to look at a lot of various economic forecasts, and the consensus is moderate economic momentum with increasing risks. And some of those risks are the trade policy shifts, tariffs, federal spending cuts, labor shortages, geopolitical tensions. And the Federal Reserve policy remains moderately restrictive, meaning they are not planning to make any moves on interest rates until the other risks and the other federal policies start to settle down and see what's going to happen. But with all of those risks, the city maintains healthy general fund reserves. And we are presenting a proposed budget that is balanced, meaning the operating revenues are expected to meet or exceed the operating expenditures. Looking at a citywide summary, overall, all funds combined, and the city has about 60 different funds, the general fund, a total of 159 million, the general fund at 58.8 million is by far the largest. That's where the majority of activities and city programs is accounted for. Next is the water funds, the water utility for a combined 31.9 million, and then the sanitary district at 25 million. Next, we switch over to the revenues. All funds, a total of 142.1 million. The largest is the taxes portion, 53.7 million, followed by charges for services. And then the expenditures by category, 59.2 million again. By category, this time, operational charges, 76.8, are the largest portion, followed by salaries and benefits, and then capital expenditures. Now we shift the focus over to the general fund. The proposed '25-'26 budget for general fund revenue is largely property taxes and sales taxes, the two largest revenues, revenue sources to the general fund, making up about two-thirds. Then we have transient occupancy tax, franchise tax, business tax, and all of those together make up the largest portion, 47.8 million of the general fund revenues. Then we have investments and contributions, 3.7 million. That's a fairly large number. Because we have such strong general fund reserves, we can invest those monies and achieve a pretty good revenue from investments. And we have charges for services, licenses and permits, internal charges, grants and subventions, fines and assessments, and some other revenues, for a total of 58.7 million. And I did want to mention that there was a question last week at the workshop on property tax, and the question was, why such a modest increase, approximately 1.3% on property tax, given the increase in value of homes? And last week, I mentioned that there is an unsecured portion that's built into that total, and that unsecured portion is expected to decrease. That brings that down to a moderate increase. But to expand on last week's response, the secured portion, the portion that is tied to property values, is expected to increase 3.5% over what we expect to receive this current year. And that's more in line with what we've experienced traditionally. So that 3.5% on the secured portion is probably more of what we were thinking when we got the question. But when you factor in the unsecured portion, and the unsecured is typically tenant-owned, personal or business property, can include supplies, machinery, equipment, boats, and what's impacting the city of Camrio is aircraft. And that portion, the unsecured portion, is expected to decrease next year, which brings the overall increase down to 1.3%. Shifting over from general fund revenue to the general fund expenditures, operational charges are the largest category, followed by salaries and benefits, and then grants, allocations, and depreciation. And similarly, there was a question last week pertaining to the sheriff costs, and why was that such a modest increase of approximately 1.8%? And that's a good question when you consider that general inflation right now is about 3%. Well, to clarify, one thing is we don't know the actual contract increases until January of 2026, and that's always the timing. So when we're putting together the budget in March and April, we have to make some assumptions and some estimates. And in working with the sheriff's office and their business department, we built in a proposed, into the proposed budget, a 5.5% estimated contract increase. So we also built in to the budget an estimated vacancy savings, and that's what offsets that 5.5% increase, and it results in an overall 1.8% increase to the budget. So the last thing I will add in relation to the sheriff contract is that is continuing at the level of service that we've always had. There was no reduction in services. This next slide, I'm going to go through the general fund five-year forecast. Each year, we do a forecast. We have assumptions built in for the five-year period, and we start off with the operating expenditures. That second column is the proposed budget year '25-'26. That second column is the proposed budget year 2526, and then the out years are years 2, 3, 4, and 5. On top of the operating expenditures, we add in the operating transfers out for the total operating costs. And next, we see the orange line is the estimated revenues and transfers in. You can see that orange line either meets or exceeds the expenditure line in all of the out years, and that means that we are structurally balanced for the five-year period. I will point out that in fiscal year 26, you see that that orange line dips a little bit below the green shaded portion. So operationally, that is a use of fund balance. That is where the operating expenditures exceed the operating revenues. But those operating expenditures that exceed the operating revenues are related to one-time projects or programs. They are not continued operational costs. So taking this slide a step further, we add on any capital transfers out, and those two light blue portions that just got added in years 27 and 28 are a anticipated loan from the general fund to the water fund. A total of 15 million split between those two years, 7.5 million per year. So again, those are one-time, a one-time loan, a one-time cost, and a one-time use of fund balance. The next part we see layered in is that light brown shaded portion. That is the uncommitted or available fund balance to the general fund. The next portion is the darker shade of tan. That's the committed portion of approximately 89 million. And we'll get to that on the next slide. But what this shows is the total general fund balance and the two portions of it, the committed portion and then the uncommitted or available portion. And you'll note that that decrease between 2026 and 2028 in that darker brown lane, that is what's been impacted by that loan amount between the two years. So that means fund balance is anticipated to go down by that use of fund balance. In talking about commitments, that's all related to the GASB Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number 54, that was implemented in 2011 that requires categorization or classification of fund balance in the annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFR. The City Council may commit fund balance for specific purposes by resolution, and the June 30, 2026, general fund, fund balance is projected to be 98.3 million, and the recommended commitments total 88, 89.9 million. And this slide shows the breakdown of those GASB 54 commitments totaling 89.9 million. Last week, there was a question on that last item on the list, the $1.4 million draw on the general, on the city's Pension Rate Stabilization Program, or PRSP Trust Fund. And this draw on the trust to pay the annual contribution to the city's unfunded accrued liability is expected to be replenished within the first six months of the 2526 fiscal year. And that is all per city policy to reach a fully funded status by the year 2036. And as of the last valuation report, June 30, 2024, we were about 80% funded. Next, I'll shift over to the water funds, excuse me, the water funds, 2526 proposed budget, and the water revenues, a total of 23.9 million. The largest portion there is the charges for services at 21.9 million. Then on the water expenditure side, a total of 31.9 million. The largest piece is the operational charges, 14.6 million, followed by capital expenditures of 8 million, then salaries and benefits of 6.7 million. Shifting over to the sanitary district budget, the budgeted sanitary revenues, a total of 25.4 million. The largest portion is the charges for services, and then there are investments and contributions of 2.2 million and taxes of 1.8 million. The flip side of the sanitary budget is the expenditure side at 25 million, largest piece being salaries and benefits, 8.6 million, followed by operational charges, 6.4 million, and then capital expenditures of 5.5 million. Now, in this section, I'll talk specifically about capital expenditures, and this includes capital expenditures across all funds citywide. This slide shows the capital expenditures budgeted for 2526 by category. Whoops. Largest one being transportation in the green, 9.4 million. Water, 8 million, followed by buildings and grounds, 6.6 million. Then sanitary district, 5.5 million, and that small sliver for storm drainage, about 100,000. And then the next few slides will show the detailed projects for each of these categories. Starting with the buildings and grounds, total of 6.6 million. Walking you through this chart a little bit, it shows the project title and then the prioritization score. We did start scoring all of our projects to give them a priority, and there is a secondary ranking that takes into account some of the projects that had similar prioritization scores. For example, those two that are shown at 85 score, a secondary ranking separated the two, showing one was a prioritization 6 and one was a prioritization 9, even though they had the same score. And the reason you see some numbers missing in that ranking is because this table only shows the projects that are budgeted for 2526. And any of, for example, between the lines 1 and 4, project secondary ranking of 2 and 3 would likely be in future years. Here is the one project for storm drainage that I mentioned for $100,000. Then under the transportation section, 9.4 million total. It looks like 15 projects, but actually it's 10 because those projects that are all with a secondary ranking of 2 are all related to pavement, so we're including those as 1. So total of 10 different projects budgeted for fiscal year 2526 for a total of 9.4 million. And last week at the workshop, a question came up on how much the city was obligated to contribute to that bold font project, the Camrio Train Station under crossing. The budget for 2526 is $959,000, and the total cost of the project is estimated to be 17 million. But of that amount, the city's portion is $910,000, and the remainder of the funding is expected to come from grants and the Ventura County Transportation Commission, VCTC. Next up, we have the water projects budgeted for fiscal year 2526, a total of 8 million. And then the sanitary district projects budgeted for fiscal year 2526 for a total of 5.5 million. The next section focuses on the annual GAN appropriations limit or spending limit. This is Article 13B of the state constitution that limits the amount of taxes that can be appropriated or spent by government, and it's required to be set each fiscal year. There are annual inflation and population growth factors applied to the limit each year to increase it, and it is required to be adopted by resolution. So that is one of the actions you'll see the end of this presentation. The appropriations limit for fiscal year 2526 is 148.9 million. The appropriations subject to limit or the amount of budget that we have in fiscal year 2526 is 63.4 million. So you can see that we are far below the spending limit of 148.9 million. This is the last section of the presentation. This is the city and Camrio Sanitary District Compensation, Classification and Benefits Program, with the City Council goal to maintain an effective workforce through competitive salaries and benefits and training. We looked at the Consumer Price Index Inflation Factor. A standard measure of inflation is 3.0% when we measure March-to-March year-over-year change. And included in this proposed budget is beginning July 1, 2025, the implementation of a 3% cost of living adjustment for all employees with no other changes to the benefit structure. And that 3.3, 0% cost of living adjustment will also apply to the Assistant City Manager and all of the Department Director position salaries. So that concludes the presentation. I'll pause for any questions, and otherwise, we have, we can go through the recommended actions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments at this time? Anyone else? Vice Mayor Tennyson, you want to start us off?
I'd love to. In a previous life, I was known as a budget geek. So I'm just going to ask a few questions for clarification for me as well as anybody else that may be watching. The city, you said, had 60 different funds. I'm not going to ask you to go through all 60.
Thank you.
I'm going to assume, and you can tell me yes or no, the general fund, the water fund, and the sanitary sanitation district are the three largest funds, correct?
Correct.
What, just a couple of items, what other funds do we have?
Okay, good question. And I'll clarify that the water, when we saw that slide, the water is actually made up of four different funds, and they're for different, they're set up for different purposes. Similarly, the sanitary district has different funds. There's an operating fund, there's a capital fund, a debt service fund. Some of the other types of funds are a category called special revenue funds, and those are all the different types of grant funds. A gas tax money fund, SB 1 is another grant monies that we receive. Those are the other types of funds that we call special revenue funds, that there are several, because we receive several different funding sources. And those are established because by law, those can only be used for specific purposes. Therefore, they have to be set up in separate funds. But each fund is a separate set of revenues and expenditures tied to it.
Thank you. Couple meetings ago, when we had the public hearing on water and sewer rates, several members of the public made comments about using sales tax revenue or general fund money for water and sewer. And I asked the question at the time, but I'd like you to restate it. We don't use general fund, sales tax, property tax revenue, which covers the entire city, that provides all of the general services for water or sewer. They're completely funded differently, correct?
That is correct.
The only general fund money we can spend on these is through a loan, which we've already done. Is that correct?
It is through a loan, a loan is a mechanism that is possible, and we have earmarked a loan. Has not happened yet. We will only loan the money when the expenditures are made for the projects. But that loan is to be repaid by the water fund at some point in time.
And we did previously loan the water fund $15 million to defuse a bond, is that correct?
Actually, we had water fund balance reserves to pay down that bond. But yes, the, the reason now that we are looking at a potential loan to the water fund is because we used those monies to repay the bonds that would otherwise have been available to pay for projects.
And the whole point of this, for me and anybody else, is we don't mix pots of money for a special district, an enterprise fund, or general city services, correct?
Correct.
One last question, the PRSP Trust Fund. Is that the fund that was established six or seven years ago?
Yes.
And is this the first time we've ever had a drawdown on this fund that can only be used for retirement benefits?
Yes.
And we have never, other than the initial amount of money that the then-City Council put into this fund, we have not put any more money into it at this point.
That is also correct.
But it's increased in value because, as you stated, we have healthy reserves, so we're able to invest that money. So we're getting interest and returns on that money.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Martina?
Thank you very much, and I know we already had our workshop, and we asked multiple questions, and you reviewed some of those here as well, Mark. The only comment that I had, and I have, I had that last year, and I have that again this year, is making our, I really like all the visuals. That was kind of my recommendation. Can we add some visuals that the public is able to digest a little easier for people who are not experts in budgeting? And so one of the ideas was to maybe, you know, post some of these images on social media or have like direct access on through our website. And I know it is a part of our budget report, but I'm wondering if there is some way to make it like into a flip book or something where people can easily access that even more, where they don't have to look through a report. So I don't, that's just one recommendation that I have in terms of, you know, accessibility to that information and clarity, and especially for people who are visual learners. And then the other thing is, I think we are doing such a great job, and I believe that we've even, like the way that we rank and receive some budget awards. So I don't know if that is on, advertised on our website, but if it's not, I think it is important for the community to know that, you know, where we stand, you know, in terms of the great work that we're doing. So yeah, those are just the overall comments that I have regarding that. But thank you so much for all of your work, to you and to your entire team and City Manager and everybody else who contributed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Susan?
Thank you. I always like to make a comment at this meeting because it feels so anticlimactic, because there's so much work that goes into the budget, so many hours. And it's not just the workshop that we all attended, but there's homework behind the scenes as well that's going on. So I just wanted to thank staff again for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trembley?
I'll echo what Councilmember Santangelo said. And Mark, thanks for the great presentation, and I want to make sure people understood. And we had a two-and-a-half-hour session on June 4 with input from council. And as Susan said, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. But just very quickly, for anybody who may not have the occasion, if you go back to Slides 9 and 10, Mark, I want to make sure people understand, that's the FY 2526 off all funds slides, and we're showing a revenue of 142 million. No, I need to go one more back. There we go, all funds. Yeah, expenditures at 159 million, and I think it was actually Slide 8 shows revenues at 142 million. But we basically, what we're doing is we, we can go ahead and utilize an accumulated fund balance of 17 million as we typically do use accumulated fund balances that roll, that come over from year to year for either one-time costs or capital expenditures, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't want to get, have people get the mistaken impression that this budget is not balanced. It is balanced. And it's both, and it's both structurally balanced with respect to a five-year outlook, right?
Yes.
And it is also operationally balanced relative to the upcoming year's operations.
Correct.
Okay, and then final question on the PRSP fund, because we were around when that was established. I don't know what our return on investment, what our ROI has been over the course of the last several years, but it's been relatively good. I want to say it's somewhere between 6% to 7%, but I'm, I'm guessing at that one. Do you recall what our ROI has been on that fund?
Yes, that is fairly close. We anticipate around 6% is the projection we build into our actuarial forecasts.
Okay, and I believe you mentioned that, and as the Vice Mayor said, this is the first time we've used it. But we do, if I remember correctly, you did say that we anticipate replenishing those funds within the first, what, 180 days of FY 2526?
Correct.
And we would be replenishing those through general fund?
Through what we expect to gain in surplus for this current fiscal year. And the timing of it is such that the payment is due, the payment to PERS is due the end of July.
Right.
But we need until September to close the books and see what our final bottom line is for revenues and expenditures, but fully expect that we will achieve enough of a surplus revenues over expenditures for the fiscal year, current fiscal year 2425, that we'll be able to replenish that amount, 1.4 million.
Okay, great, that clarifies that. All right. Thanks again for the excellent work by you and by finance staff and by everybody. Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
Anyone else like to add anything?
I'll add a little bit. I want to thank the staff, Mark, your staff, all department heads, all the employees of our great city. They start working on this months and months and months ago. As we all know, this is the most important document that we approve, hopefully tonight. We do refer back to this on a very consistent basis. We all have copies on this. We all look at this throughout the year. I can remember when the city didn't have the money to be able to do the projects and run the city to the level that we're able to run it now. And that's, I credit past councils and past employees and current employees and city managers and Assistant City Managers for putting us in the situation that we're in today. I've always said, you can't do much of anything if you don't have revenues to do much of anything. So again, So again, I want the public to know that we've been working on this for several months. It's not just tonight that this takes a lot of, a lot of work for many, many people, a lot of them that you know, a lot of them that you don't know. So I want to thank this, again, the staff, my colleagues here for sticking with us this year. The presentation has been streamlined, and I think what Councilmember Martita had said too, that we will continue to improve this process so we can get, tell our story because we've got a great story to tell to the public. So with that, unless there's any other comments or anything here, I believe we'll go down and do this a little separately. The Camrio Sanitary District will be first, so if I entertain a motion?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. City Clerk, did you want to do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kilde?
Yes. So that'll get us down to the city council, and it'll be a motion and a second for the recommended actions, one through four. So I'll entertain that.
I can move recommended actions.
Well, we actually have recommended actions one through five.
Yes, but I have to recuse myself.
So just one through four.
Yeah.
Okay. I think there was already a motion?
So I can move recommended actions one through four.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for recommended action items one through four. So Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kilde?
Yes. Okay, that's going to get us down. I do have a conflict on item five. It's a, I have my business close to a trolley stop, so I'm going to have to recuse myself and leave it in the hands for Vice Mayor Tennyson. Counselor, do you need to make any more comments on that?
No, you've reported your conflict, and then you can leave the dice, and I'll get you when they're done.
Okay. Thanks. All right, now we will address action number five on discussion item "Vias Invicta," the will of the council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll move item five under the city council recommended actions.
I can second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kilde is absent.
That passes four to zero with Mayor Kilde absent. Boy, I had a brief stint, didn't I?
Oh, yes, we are going to bring him back. There was a lot of suspense.
All right, so we have done item five. So I'm going to ask the city clerk, is there anything that you need to report at a closed session or anything? Or city attorney, I'm sorry.
Certainly, yes. Yes, we did conduct closed session earlier this evening, but there is no reportable action to make.
All right, so tonight, if you would be so kind, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of my friend. It's Dr. Tom Holden. And if you will, I'd like to read a little bit about the life of times of Tom Holden. And Dr. Thomas Edward Holden was born April 1, 1954, and unfortunately passed away May 26 of 2025. He was a beloved husband, father, optometrist, public servant, and community leader. He passed away peacefully on May 26, 2025, surrounded by his family. He was 71 years old. And Tom was born on April 1, 1954 in Oxnard, California. And Tom was the son of Patrick and Catherine Holden. They are proprietors of Pat Holden's Liquor, and that was a fixture in Oxnard for decades there. You couldn't live in Oxnard and not know Pat Holden's liquor. He was one of six children, and he grew up in a tight-knit family with deep roots in the Oxnard community, a place he would serve with passion and pride for the rest of his life. Tom attended Santa Clara Elementary, Santa Clara High School, before continuing his education at Ventura College and Questa College. He went on to earn his Doctorate of Optometry degree from the Southern California College of Optometry, where he met his lovely wife, Lisa Knapp, who had become his wife and his lifelong partner. The couple married in 1987 and shared 38 wonderful years together. In 1988, Dr. Tom and Dr. Lisa returned to Oxnard and co-founded the Family Optometric Group, where they cared for generations of local families with uncompromising personalized service. Tom was deeply committed to his parents, his profession, and his hometown. In 1993, Dr. Holden was elected to the Oxnard City Council in a special election. His leadership, vision, and integrity quickly made an impact. He was elected mayor of Oxnard in 2004 and served four consecutive terms until 2012. During his time in office, Dr. Holden was a tireless advocate for public safety, community development, and civic engagement. He worked to ensure Oxnard was a safe, thriving community, one that a future generations could be proud to call home. His commitment to service extended far beyond being an elected official. Dr. Holden served on boards of St. John's Hospital, Boys and Girls Club of Oxnard, Port Weneme, and he was involved in several and numerous activities such as the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary Club, and contributed time and energy to numerous community events. He was Oxnard. Tom loved Oxnard, and I had the pleasure of serving with Tom on VCTC. And Tom was a tireless voice on having clean buses. That was his passion. That was his motives. He really understood that issue. He was one of the early kind of people that were promoting clean buses here, among several other things. And he was a friend of mine, and Tom was an outstanding person and just a great guy. And Oxnard lost a real important member of their community here. The county has lost a leader, and I've lost a personal friend here with Tom. But Godspeed, Tom, and a life well lived. So with that, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Dr. Tom Holden.